Work sessions are for informational purposes only and for discussion. There will be no action taken during this meeting and any subsequent action will be added to a regular 5:30 business meeting agenda. And with that, Jill, I don't know if you can help us prep for this work session or am I turning it over to Shannon or Katie?
I'm gonna, I'm not sure. I think perhaps Shannon and ladies Shannon and Katie, let me know. Maybe you guys introduce yourselves first, but also will you guys be running the PowerPoint or the presentation? Or do you need me to?
Yes, I have the PowerPoint. If I am allowed to screen share, I can, I can do that. I can run it.
Great. Well, then hit it.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I, let me first start out by saying thank you so much for having us today. Session today. And Shannon, I am Katie Barnett. I am the Animal Welfare Council for the Lawrence Humane Society and have been since 2013, which is actually how long we've been working on this project. Shannon, do you want to introduce yourself while I get this presentation?
Yeah. Hi, I am Shannon Wells. I am the Executive Director of the Lawrence Humane Society. I just finished my first year here and prior to that, I worked in animal sheltering for eight years down in Kansas City. Have been working with animals professionally for 14 years. And as far as the presentation goes, I'm going to ask Katie to do a lot of the heavy lifting for two reasons. One, because she has the legal mind that I don't have, which is very helpful in this discussion. And two, because a lot of the work on this predates me. And so I think she has a great history of kind of where we've been and where we want to go. And then I'll hop back in on the end of the presentation and we can tackle any questions that you guys have together.
Okay, so I will share my screen. Okay. Well, so we introduced ourselves already and Shannon, thank you so much for turning this over to me for just a bit. Is, are we good on screen sharing? Can everyone see the presentation? Okay, just wanted to confirm before I launch into it. So really our goal is a progressive, safe and humane Douglas County. When I was doing research into this, just to be sure I had all the facts, it looks like the code hasn't been updated for 14 years. And you know, that's important for several reasons, but also we just have learned so much more about animal care, animal keeping, animal behavior. We've just learned so much in the last 14 years. So it's really great for us to just revisit this generally. And then the last thing that was updated was a reference to vicious animals and we'll kind of go through that a little bit today. But that was kind of in reaction to other communities banning certain breeds of dogs, which Lawrence opted not to do. And Douglas County kind of did subtly. So we'll talk about that and you know, what a revision for that looks like. And then the other thing is we want to have a safer approach to keeping dogs in the county, in the unincorporated areas of the county. And all of this would be done to free up resources for the sheriff's office and to kind of make a more humane community. So since 2013, and I just want to add, I'm really excited to hear your thoughts. I'm so glad that Sarah and Jill suggested this for a work session. And you know, we can do as many work sessions, I think, as possible to make this something that we all want for our community. But I really just am excited to answer questions. So since 2013, Craig Weinog requested the Lawrence Humane Society start work on some changes to the county code, chapter two of the county code, which has to do with animals. Well, there were some changes in leadership at the Lawrence Humane Society a year after that. And then, you know, there have been changes in priorities and leadership between the Lawrence Humane Society and then of course Douglas County. Now we have Sarah and Shannon in their respective roles and we felt like it was a really great time to start to move forward on, on this that we've been working on for eight years. And the other thing is, I think it's important to mention that we all have leadership changes on the county commission and with county, other county elected officials, including the district attorney's office and the sheriff's office. So we have all new people, but we made sure that, you know, when we were talking to candidates, at least Commissioner Portio and Commissioner Reed, because this was initiated by Commissioner DeRusso, we wanted to make sure that we had interest from the commission during the campaign and made sure that we were on the right, in, heading in the right direction. So it was nice to, to finally get this on the agenda. And it's so important that we talk to the stakeholders. So of course, as I said, we talked to Sheriff Armbruster both on the campaign and when he was elected and also District Attorney Valdez on the campaign and when she was elected. And they both had pretty significant input on not only the language of the code that is proposed, but also the enforcement arm, which we can talk about later. We wanted to make sure that this was something that the enforcement part of, this wasn't just an animal initiate, animal advocacy initiated issue. So we also, I just wanted to thank Jill from the County Administrator's Office because you've been so helpful in kind of moving this forward. The proposed changes is a kind of a four-pronged approach. Revising chapter two of the county code and moving enforcement of chapter two to the Lawrence Humane Society and then creating an administrative hearing process for violations of chapter two. And of course, continued collaboration with stakeholders. Not only did we want to talk to the district attorney's office and the sheriff's office, but we want to make sure that the, the language changes and what we're considering here is something that the residents of the unincorporated areas of the county want. And in the years prior discussions with Commissioner Thelman and Commissioner, former Commissioner Thelman and former Commissioner DeRusso, they sought a lot of input from their constituents. And again, that's what this change is kind of based on is we know that unincorporated areas of the county are different from the city. But we also know that there are changes that the city has made that are more progressive and more in keeping with best practices for animal control enforcement. And so kind of how do we marry that into really good policy for the unincorporated areas of the county? So you know, kind of talked about why the change, but I'll just tick through it real quick. There is a lot of inconsistency and confusion throughout the county code, like chapter two of the county code with regard to animals. It is anywhere from describing the nuisance behavior of an animal, what qualifies as a nuisance and what a penalty is for nuisance behavior, to describing behaviors of animals in various violations of the county code. So you could have an animal that caused injury to a person and kind of depending on the whim of, I don't know, you know, the deputy or the complainant could be charged anywhere from a vicious animal to a dangerous animal to a nuisance animal. So we really want to have us one specific definition for a specific behavior and what that violation is. We don't want to have any confusion with law enforcement. And then we also have, I think I talked about before, just this outdated language that originated from the idea that perhaps we should ban certain breeds of dogs within the unincorporated areas of the county. And also in an attempt to target dog fighting in the unincorporated areas of the county, this language was proposed. Certain dogs, because of a combination of their physical attributes and disposition, pose a clear and present threat to public safety. We don't, the state statute doesn't punish victims of animal cruelty or victims of dog fighting by deeming them vicious. It's inconsistent with best practices in animal sheltering and animal cruelty enforcement. And then also I've seen this just in my private practice of complaints saying, you know, there's a really big dog on this property and it scares me and sometimes it gets off the owner's property. And so I'd like it to be deemed a vicious animal. And well, you know, this language could lend itself to enforcing that against that pet owner and the animal's done nothing wrong. So we want to clean that up and have really definable behavioral characteristics of the animals to, to, if we're going to put a label on them and say they're violating the county code. Ineffective procedures, you know, drilling down and looking at who's enforcing chapter two and talking to the sheriff's office and specifically Sheriff Armbruster and of course Deputy Cooper, who has been charged with enforcing most of the animal violations within the unincorporated areas of the county over the last few years. When we look at the data, is it really, is the sheriff's office the most appropriate enforcement agency of animals found running at large or animals that display dangerous behavior? You know, when these sheriff's deputies have no training in, I know Deputy Cooper had a little bit of training, but these deputies have no training in how to handle animals, specifically vicious animals. And so it seems like a more appropriate enforcement agency could be the Lawrence Humane Society. There's also a heavy emphasis throughout the code on punishment through the district court for minor offenses. And we don't want to send a lot of these offenses over to the district court if we can avoid it. And so when I was talking to the County Administrator's Office, both Sarah and Jill, they suggested maybe we look at other counties that have maybe lower level enforcement and penalties for animal related offenses and what that procedure looks like. And we can get into the research on that, maybe after the presentation. But that's what we look to, to develop this plan. And so we don't want to send every single animal offense over to district court. It gets lost over in district court. And then it also indirectly criminalizes poverty by making these minor offenses turn into major misdemeanors with jail time and fees and fines, you know, depending on how long the animal is impounded at the Lawrence Humane Society during the penancy of the case, which we know over in district court can be, it's a very long time. Specifically when animal cases don't necessarily have their own docket or priority. So we don't want to create this vicious cycle of poverty for people in the unincorporated areas of the county. And then increased length of stay for seized animals at the animal shelter. And Shannon, do you want to talk about that briefly, like what that means?
Yeah. So you know, when we're talking about, you know, other forms of property, you know, you've got a stolen TV. It can sit on a shelf and we can wait to, you know, address that sort of issue. But we start talking about animals, we have to factor in the level of care that we're able to provide them. And is it good quality and is it humane? And we really need a process that is efficient to move these animals through the system. We have some examples for, of cases that, you know, really put the animals' welfare at risk because of how long it took. And so for us, a real driving factor in wanting to look at this is how can we do our best for the animals while they're in our care? We had two dogs that were a part of a case, Zoe and Zion, and they ended up being in the shelter system for a year. Both of them were puppies when they entered the shelter and adults as they left. And you know, as much as we love and care for them at the shelter, the shelter environment is no place for, for puppies to be raised. And so we struggled to be able to meet their, their emotional needs, their behavioral needs. So for us, you know, we want to make sure that while we're caring for these animals, we're doing it the most responsible way possible. And I think that is really finding a way to keep the length of stay for these animals shorter, but you know, still be able to move them through the legal process.
So here's the data that we looked at. I contacted the sheriff's office and I believe it's Lieutenant Hagenbush was able to provide me with the calls for service or complaints that they received. And I kind of based this chart off of the 2019 numbers and the 2017, 2018 and 2019 numbers were pretty consistent. So there's an average of about 500 calls for service for the unincorporated areas of the county that the sheriff's deputies are responding to. The majority of them are animals at large. So dogs, cats and other animals running at large, we have our sheriff's deputies out there responding or, you know, requesting that the public bring those animals in. And the second one, the second largest was animal welfare checks. And animal welfare checks, while there were, the majority of the calls were dogs at about 50%. There were 13 horse calls. There was a call for a turtle, a call for, for deer phone calls, two coyotes, three raccoons, one pig and three cows. So again, really looking at who, who is the appropriate agency to respond to these kind of calls. I just would, would argue, and I think, you know, through my conversations with the sheriff's department, it would be really nice if we could free up some of their time. The Lawrence Humane Society could free up some of their time to respond to these calls for service for a welfare check on horses. And then again, some of the animal, the other animal calls, animals trapped or animals caught by other property owners. There were 23 dog calls, but 31 calls total, one horse, one bobcat, two cows, two pigs. And like I said, the bobcat, I just, I think it could be a more effective use of everyone's time and resources if we had an animal agency responding to these lower level calls for service. And in the packet, I provided a kind of a decision tree for calls for service. And most of the calls responded to initially would be the Lawrence Humane Society. If they were severe offenses like violations, animal cruelty violations that would fall under the Kansas State Statute Criminal, Criminal Animal Cruelty, that would be done in conjunction with the sheriff's office, which is actually what's done currently. The Lawrence Humane Society does have a handful of humane investigators that have gone through training that co-respond with the sheriff's office. And then of course, if there are calls for vicious animals that could be in danger, that are at large and endangering the safety of the public, we would certainly need assistance from the sheriff's office on a case like that. So, you know, again, using this multifaceted approach and kind of a comprehensive approach to dealing with animal issues out in the unincorporated areas of the county is, is kind of what we're proposing with data that reflects, I think, best practices for this approach.
Yeah. So I'll jump in here and just talk a little bit more about why this matters. You know, for us, we want to make sure that the county is safe, but we also want it to be a really welcoming place for people and their animals. And that's going to be companion animals. It's going to be livestock as well. You know, I think for us, we're really focused on striking that balance between, you know, having revisions that make enforcement, you know, feasible, but also being able to provide, you know, outreach type services so that some things can be resolved without, you know, taking punitive action, which will help free up the court system. And also like Katie talked about, you know, we don't want to criminalize poverty. So, you know, I think with our proposal, we're kind of prepared to balance both of those, recognizing that what, what county residents want isn't necessarily exactly what city residents want in Lawrence. And so we've tried to look at this really from a, from a county perspective and, and make sure that we aren't just, you know, taking what we did in Lawrence and slapping it over here out in the county. We've tried to be really thoughtful. So for us, you know, really focusing on making that welcoming for everybody. We also really want to focus on being able to provide a higher quality animal service. And this isn't me trying to be disparaging of the sheriff's department. I think that everybody's trying to do the best that they can, but one unique thing that we offer is that we're able to really specialize. You know, this is our field. This is our area of expertise. And so we have the knowledge about how the law can be applied and, you know, when it's best to take a punitive approach and when it's best to, to perform some outreach. And so we can just provide that, that specialized expertise and, you know, know the, the law in that particular section of the code really well. And this is also going to free up deputies to be able to work on other things. It's going to free up the district court. It's going to allow us to move animals through the disposition process more quickly, which is more humane for them. And it will satisfy due process without going through district court. We put together a rough estimate of fiscal impact in order for us to be able to respond to the calls that come in, in the county. And so on the left side, you'll see.
Did you lose it, Shannon?
Yeah. Oh, I thought I was gone. I was going to text you and say, my computer like went black. Okay.
Oh, you're fine. You're still on.
I had like a little heart attack. Okay, good. So on the left side, we have, you know, what the, what the cost would be to the county. We believe that we need to have a minimum of two staff members available to respond to calls, to provide coverage, you know, during regular business hours, as well as respond to emergencies after hours. It'll at times take more than that, but the shelter is prepared to subsidize additional staffing for more complicated calls that come in that need extra hands or if the vet needs to come out and look at a case. You know, we are prepared to absorb that cost. Estimate, an estimate for liability insurance increase for us would be about $8,000. We'll be able to sort of fine tune some of these numbers if it looks like this is something that we want to move forward with. But that is the, the rough estimate. We will need to invest in some training for staff to make sure that they are certified so that we have the best, you know, the best oversight of cases with the best practices in place. I estimated an average of two calls per day when factoring mileage. This is probably a bit on the conservative side. We believe there's probably some calls that are not actually reported in the numbers that we've gotten. So we were kind of prepared that the volume may actually be higher than what, what we think it might be when we look at that data. Phone access so that we can reach officers that would be responding to calls at any time of day. And then equipment would be things like safety equipment, so control sticks, snaggy snares, cat nappers, things like that to outfit the staff to be able to carry that equipment and be prepared to respond to a call at any given time. On the flip side, Lawrence Humane Society, you know, is really committed to seeing this, this opportunity through and we're willing to put up some, some of our own investment in this operation. So administrative costs, we would cover, this includes, you know, management of these individuals that are responding to calls, legal expertise. You know, Katie is available for us and would continue to help us as we deal with cases that are in the county. We would like to incorporate public education as a component of how we serve county residents. And so we would be putting together some programming to help people understand what resources are available to them and try to bring some of those resources, like vaccine clinics and things like that out into the county. Medical care for the animals that we are taking into our, our care. Any additional staffing that's needed to respond to calls, like for example, if we had, you know, a hoarding case or something like that, that would require a lot of extra hands on deck, we would provide that. And then we have a vehicle available for us to use and we would continue to provide the, the normal routine maintenance for that at our cost. So now we turn it over to you guys. If you guys have any questions for Katie or I?
This is Sarah and I really appreciate the presentation. I'm sure the commissioners have some questions. You know, there are a couple of things I, I want us to sort of think about as we go into this. And, you know, currently what we, but we budget $43,000 a year for the Humane Society as a part of our normal budget. So my, this would come to us as a part of a budget request for the 2022 budget. And, and so from that perspective, Shannon and Katie can correct me if I'm wrong. So it'd be the additional ask of the $77,000 on top of the 43 that we currently have budgeted?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And so I think we can just, you know, this is a great background for us to have in preparation for that, for that budget request as to how we talk about that. Another thing I'd like to just bring up, and I know that I've got some of our planning and zoning staff here if we want to get into it. And I know there's some parts on the code. We do currently have two monkey sanctuaries in rural Douglas County. I found out. So we may want to talk about that if we, you know, how they would be impacted by this and if they would need to be permitted or how that process would go. I know, so I would, you know, as this is really sort of the inaugural public kickoff publicly about this conversation. You know, as we continue to get information from the community, you know, I think visiting again with, with Tanya Voight and Tina Rakes at our planning and zoning department might be helpful. I know they've had some issues in terms of other parts of our code where we don't permit animals to be kennelled unless there's a residence, which actually kind of can be a problem at times. So I think there might be some places where we want to tweak that, the code in terms of some of those pieces. And so we can just decide if there's stuff there you want to, if you want to, if we want to tweak in terms of that. And then before we, and I think we can talk about this towards the end. I would like to talk about how we sort of get more public engagement and thought on this process as we prepare for a budget request. So I'll just plant that seed in the commissioners' heads as I let them sort of ask their questions.
Thank you, Sarah. This is Commissioner Portio. Thank you so much, Shannon and Katie, for the presentation and for all the background information. I know that this has been a long time coming. So I really appreciate us having this conversation in this space. One piece, and I'm sorry to see that District Attorney Suzanne Valdez just had to leave because one piece that I did have a question about was that administrative hearings officer and how the administrative hearings, I really liked the idea of decreasing the use of the courts for this, shifting this to an administrative hearings officer. But how, can you give me a bit more detail about that? With the kind of budget impacts of increasing funds for the Humane Society to take care of some of this? Do we see a decrease in some of the work of the district courts? Help me understand how this administrative hearing officer is fitting into everything.
Thank you. I can try to answer that as best I can. So when we were talking about this, like I said, we taught, we, we looked at what others' counties were doing. And so I think it's Shawnee County gives notices to correct and gives 48 hours for people to correct their animal issues. Johnson County goes through, they have codes court in Johnson County. And then there was one other county I looked at, I think it was Sedgwick County. And we kind of decided the administrative hearing officer is best for what we're trying to do. And that was based on a lot of talking to District Attorney Valdez's office and her specifically. Originally, there were some questions as to whether or not we really wanted to do that. And like, what are the, the benefits to having an administrative hearing officer and having the enforcement done by an administrative hearing officer that would then go through the administrative hearing Procedure Act, I think. Procedure Act, I think is what it's called through the Kansas State statute. Um, and, and so we talked about like whether that was feasible, if that was something that they wanted to do. And in the end, uh, uh, District Attorney Valdez's office said that that was something that they were in favor of. So when we talked to, um, Sarah and Jill, uh, and I can let you guys answer that, it seems that that would be something that Stevenson Brand would likely take over, but I don't want to speak for the county. Um, do one of you guys want to answer that, that question of it?
Yeah, and I can just speak a little bit, you know, I, I, we, I haven't really had a whole lot of in-depth conversations with, uh, county council and, and our county council office of Stevenson Brand. I know, uh, uh, Assistant County Council Brad Finkeldey is available if we want to ask some more specific questions, but I have not asked them for a proposal. And I would want to verify that they feel like they could serve in that capacity and that there wouldn't be any sort of conflicts of interest in terms of serving as county council and as also the administrative hearing officer. What I like about this option is, um, you know, and, and we talked about this with Katie, and I know the planning and zoning staff that are available have also talked about this. Um, you know, we have a, it's, it, we're sort of in a rough spot without a municipal court here at a, at a county level for code violations. And then so I'm interested in sort of exploring through this administrative hearing officer process, how this could work. And if it, it works effectively with the animal code, it, it's something I think we could look as a model to, to think about explaining, expanding for planning and zoning um, and other efforts. So I, I'm, I would be really interested in, in trying to, between now and budget, getting a proposal for what that would look like from Stevenson Brand. Brad, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, or if you feel that there's something, um.
No, I mean, we certainly haven't looked at in, in terms of a proposal. Um, we've talked about, you know, John, Jeff Hyman and I have talked about it internally. Jeff does a lot of the codes enforcement. He also does some criminal work and he actually sits sometimes as the in, um, pro team municipal judge. Um, and so he has some experience in this kind of, you know, quasi um, enforcement type things. And so, you know, the initial thought would be someone like Jeff would be the most appropriate person to do that. Again, as Katie said, really what you, a, a, and I'm sure Suzanne Valdez talked about, you're trying to, um, mitigate the due process of taking someone's animal or restricting their animals. And so certainly a administrative hearing process gives you that ability. And then it is, uh, you know, appealable to district court if someone, um, objects. So I think it's certainly a valid process that would protect the county. And, and, you know, I think would be a, a good thing to consider, certainly other options, but we'd be happy to help.
Commissioner Reed here. Um, I wanted to piggyback off Commissioner Portillo's question a bit and ask if we have any. I mean, I, I do wonder about cost savings from district court, um, that perspective, although it, it seems that not a lot of these cases move through the district court. So perhaps that's difficult to really assess because a lot of things are being, um, not followed up on or kind of falling through the cracks and not always getting to a point of solution. Um, but I am curious about what, um, I know Sheriff Armbrister is not here to speak to that, but Shannon and Katie, if, um, or Sarah and Jill, as part of those conversations can kind of give any indication about what the, uh, impact to, to budget and staff resources for the sheriff's department looks like. Cause when you say an average of 500 calls in the unincorporated areas a year, I mean, that's theoretically more than two calls a day on some days. So I'm just curious, uh, if you have a sense of that. And then I guess my other question in conjunction with that is, um, wanting to know on the humane society's side of things, what, and maybe these details are not worked out yet, and you can tell me that if that's the case, um, what would the, I guess, staffing and, um, availability of staff to respond to those calls on a 24 hour basis, um, presumably would be, and if, I guess dispatch has been a part of these conversations at all and how calls will get routed. I packed a lot into that, so tell me if you want me to rewind and repeat any of it, but, um, any feedback would be helpful.
Um, I'll just, to your first question, I see that Deputy Cooper is on and I just wanted her to, um, she has been in touch with Lieutenant Qualls as well as Sheriff Armbrister about this and is kind of, you know, as she's been enforcing this over the last several years, is probably a great person to speak about this. Deputy Cooper, are you still there?
I'm not sure if Charlie's able to, to, I know she had come over earlier and planned to listen, so I don't know if she's prepared to speak. But I do think, uh, so, I mean, obviously Deputy Cooper, if you can come off mic, that's, or off mute, that's totally fine. Um, but I, you know, I think we could, that's something we could follow up with the sheriff on in preparation for a the budget proposal, if that is, um, you know, if there truly are some cost savings. I, I think what you stated at the beginning of your question more towards, in the past, a lot of these just haven't gone anywhere. Um, and it's been really in terms of district court side of it. So I, I don't know that we could really see many, much savings on that end, but I think, uh, but it's certainly something we could follow up with the sheriff on.
Shannon, do you want to talk about the staffing?
Yeah. So we are prepared to, uh, respond to calls during our standard business hours, which is nine to six. There may be a little bit of flexibility in extending that. Um, and then we would provide 24 hour service for, uh, emergency calls. So you know, like a hit by car or, you know, police are in a situation and they need an animal removed, or sorry, sheriff's department's in a situation, they need the animal removed. You know, we would be able to come out, we would have a staff person that would do that. We, we maintain an on-call schedule to, uh, accommodate that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I think I, other, I don't think I have any other questions right now. I just wanted to, um, make a few comments and say that I, I appreciate that Shannon and Katie had reached out, um, last year and during the fall and kind of let us know that this was something that had been in the works and that conversations were ongoing with, um, the new sheriff and DA elects, which I was really glad to hear about. And that from the get-go, those conversations have been happening um, between all the entities that are involved potentially in these cases. Um, so thank you for, for your due diligence and that, and for parent, for preparing all of this. I am, um, I'm excited about the opportunity to, um, I'm excited about the fact that, um, it seems like you all are really working hard to be mindful of, um, but finding alternatives to punitive measures, um, when it comes to enforcement of the code and it comes to responsiveness to resident complaints and concerns that are expressed. And so I'm hopeful that, um, this approach is really kind of solutions, um, and support oriented. And I know that you all have a lot of great, um, pet resource support and animal resource support programs, um, that have benefited a lot of folks and, and made it so that folks can keep their animals with them, um, in a safe and, and humane and healthy ways. So um, I just wanted to appreciate and acknowledge you all for that work and making sure that that's the, the lens through which we're looking at this, um, and the, the potential ripple effect of really, it's one piece of decriminalizing poverty and instead approaching it with a, with, instead of responding to it as though it's a crime, responding in a way that, um, perhaps there are some resources or supports that can be put in place to mitigate the issue. Um, rather than jumping straight to criminalization or not following up at all because nobody really knows where, what to do or where to go. So I'm excited about the, the clarity of roles and having some pathways moving forward.
Commissioner Kelly, um, just a first gratitude for the report and all the work that's been done. I know that you've been working on this for a long time and really appreciate that. I, um, I, I did have some questions about the education side of it and sort of to Sarah's point about community engagement. I'm sure you all want this to go smoothly. And so especially, I, you know, noticed the education piece in your presentation, Shannon Knowles, and was interested if you had any ideas about how we might engage the public on this process to get some feedback around it. Um, to gather more information to, um, you know, make sure we, we've thought of it from the public's perspective as well as from, you know, the legal perspective and those, those concepts. Any thoughts on that?
So, I mean, I, I think, and Katie, you might jump in too, but, um, you know, I mean, I think there's a variety of different ways that, that we can go about this. You know, I think that, you know, Katie has, um, crafted some really good support materials that try to address some of the changes. Uh, her FAQs are, are really good at breaking down what might be confusing for people. You know, why would we want to change the dangerous dog ordinance? Well, it's, it's to provide better clarity to it, not to, not to leave people without protection. Um, and so, you know, certainly if we need to do some kind of forum where we present, we would be more than happy to do that. I also think if there are specific constituents that you want us to factor in that, that you're concerned we haven't really looked at yet, like the monkey sanctuaries, you know, we're happy to, to take into consideration what, what are the, the needs and challenges around that. Um, and, and compare it against, you know, what we've crafted. Um, it's also, you know, it may work for some of you guys. I know you guys have, um, some of you are doing, uh, like a, I don't know what the right word is for, but like a town hall or a check-in, an opportunity for your constituents to, to connect with you. Um, and so, you know, if you want us to join in on something like that, we would be happy to do that as well.
This is Katie. Um, yeah, I just would piggyback on what Shannon said. Um, what we did when we kind of overhauled the city code was we offered kind of a town hall at the library. That was naturally before COVID. Um, so there may be some limitations. Um, I don't ever want technology to be a limitation though. So if, um, we wanted to have any kind of in-person community meeting, um, you know, pursuant to the county orders, health orders. Um, I would be more than happy to put on, you know, between Shannon and I, we can invite the public to anything. Um, we, we want this to be widely distributed and we want to arm our public with information. Um, I live in the unincorporated area of the county. Uh, so I, I would want to know what's going on out here. Uh, so I, we are more than happy to do whatever you all think is best as the elected officials and, um, you know, how we can best communicate with your constituents. We are always happy to, to do something like that. So whether we host a town hall, whether we have some information that we release on, um, social media or, um, initially roll out the FAQs and overview, we'd be happy to do whatever you think is best. If you want us to take the lead, we'd be happy to do that too.
I think that, just chiming in here, you know, I think that is something that, um, you know, Jill and I could work with, um, Shannon and Katie to come up with some materials and working with our public information officer, um, Carrie Britt about how we could collect some materials and, and what would be a strategy for just sort of, um, trying to gather some feedback and getting out. I know there, you know, we have a variety of opportunities, um, you know, between the newspaper and radio to perhaps get some information out about that we're considering changes. So I think we could sort of develop what, what our plan would be and what would be a reasonable timeframe to get some of that information. Um, and be able to bring something back to the commission in a window to be considered, uh, definitely before budget in terms of how that would proceed.
Thanks. The rest of my questions were covered by other commissioners. I just want to affirm the questions that Commissioner Reed had and having, you know, how does this impact the other agencies who have been doing or not doing this work as it sounds like. And as we have tough decisions to make around budget time, the more information we can have on that, of course, the better.
This is Commissioner Reed. Again, um, I guess I, I did want to piggyback a bit off Commissioner Kelly's question and ask, um, Sarah, I think you've spoken to it a little bit, but can you, especially as a new commissioner, help me kind of understand process wise, like when a proposed change to our county code comes before us and it starts as this study session and discussion, uh, and we're already talking about wanting to make sure we're intentional with outreach and education and asking for public input, um, what are kind of the next general process steps to pre-budget, um, discussions, I guess?
Yeah, thanks for that. And this is unusual because there are the two pieces. There's the code piece, you know, and, and we do alter code from time to time and, and honestly, the code pieces relatively can be easy, um, in terms of the commission can make, adopt code changes kind of at any point in time. Um, and, and then we publish them in the paper and voila, new code. Um, the hard part here with, with the additional budget request related to enforcement, you know, I think that and, and our budget process starting here in a, you know, a couple of weeks and, and then moving through July for approval, then for 2022, you know, I think we would want to make, you know, have this in consideration for budget. If it is included in the budget, I think then we could come back and prepare for a code change, you know, effective in 2022, when, you know, and time that up in terms of implementation. And I'm sure that's something that, you know, Shannon and I and Jill and Katie, we could all work out in terms of if that's what's approved. But I, you know, so I think honestly, the timing's perfect because this would give us some opportunities to get some additional feedback from the community in terms of, is this the kind of code they want? You know, are they ready? And then that will be helpful, you know, for you all to hear that when you approach budget in terms of, you know, responding to this additional request for additional resources. And then I think we would be, once it's, once we're able to, I would say the first technical piece in terms of approval will probably be budget. And then we could come back with the code changes based off the feedback and what you hear and your deliberations in terms of budget. Does that make sense to the team too? I, you know, honestly, I want to make sure that's, you know, I think that's, uh, we, we could alter that if needed.
Thank you, Sarah. That was helpful. Um, okay, I have one last question I thought of. Um, Katie and Shannon, can you help us remember or know if there are any other? I know there's no other animal shelters in the county, at least that I'm aware of. Uh, any other like animal welfare related agencies or organizations, um, that, that do work in Douglas County that we, I just want to make sure, other than individual residents, so I'm thinking through like any other groups or organizations to be mindful of seeking input from.
Um, I mean, there's.
Sanctuaries, perhaps.
There's wildlife groups, but they wouldn't fall under what we're doing. Um, I don't think so, Katie.
Okay. No, I, I, I can't think of any, anyone. And of course I'll feel really silly if there's someone who chimes in and is upset. Um, that we couldn't remember them, but there are certainly no animal shelters. Um, there are no licensed, there are no other licensed animal shelters or, um, rescues in Douglas County, um, that are not involved in this already. Um, there is one licensed animal breeder, dog and cat breeder in Douglas County, um, is a cat breeder. And actually that cat breeder, um, ceased operations and Lawrence to me society took several of the cats, um, over the last two years. So to know that we had a monkey sanctuary, two monkey sanctuaries, I, I was not aware of that. Um, but again, that could be part of our outreach, uh, method is to see if there are any other stakeholders that we're unaware of. Um, so no, other than human, human service agencies. So I know that I did talk to your codes enforcement officer, um, who, when responding to codes enforcement issues, there are often animals there because we know that there's a huge link between the maltreatment of people and maltreatment of animals. Um, and so we did talk to her quite a bit, um, at several times, and I think it was 2017, 2018. Um, so we might bring her to the table as well, um, to see if there's anything that we missed in this code language or, or procedurally, um, enforcement wise, you know, on that flow chart. Perhaps there's, um, some place that we needed to alert codes, uh, that we could talk about.
Yeah, I agree, Katie. I think just looping back in planning and zoning and codes now, you know, would be great. Uh, you know, I've had a brief conversation with them and I think they're, you know, they're eager to have this conversation. Katie's right. It, it does happen on occasion and then actually know some unfortunate situations where we, like I've mentioned, where animals are kennelled without anyone on the property. Um, and, and so like, you know, and that's a difficult situation. And, and so like, you know, and that's a difficult situation, because you can't really care for the animal if you're not there. And so I do think that there are some things they might be helpful with, and they're also going to have great contacts for us with our, with our unincorporated area residents and how we reach out to them. So I think they might be a helpful group for us to interact with as we just kind of begin to roll this conversation out. So, and they, I think they, they're very aware of the monkey sanctuaries, so I think that's something we can help negotiate, too. I didn't know we had monkey sanctuaries till today, and I, so I've been doing this job 10 years, so I learned something new today.
Feel better.
Right. Thank you for that. Sorry, I kind of put you on the spot. I think Shannon, you, you maybe mentioned Operation Wildlife. I don't know if that's what you said, or I just thought I heard that. But I think when I was reading through the packet, that was some, somebody that popped into my mind and just wondering. My experience with them is that people bring wildlife to them, but I don't know if they have any kind of responsiveness to some of those calls. Just because I heard you mention that some of the calls the sheriffs are receiving, it's not always about pets or livestock, it is about wild animals sometimes. So that was an organization that popped into my head and just wondering, I don't know if their role is just to be there and ready to accept whatever animals are brought to them for rehabilitation, or if they have any sort of proactive roles, so.
I mean, that's the traditional role that they have taken, but whether or not they would, we could engage them as a partner in a different way, I think is a great discussion for us to have.
Yeah, and I would say that would be something to talk to the sheriff's office, who has historically been involved with enforcement. Who do they call when they have the bobcat in a trap? Or who do they call when someone has raccoons on their property? So, you know, just having Deputy Cooper available or Lieutenant Qualls available to help us understand how it's been traditionally done will, will be really helpful.
Seems like reaching out to our local pet stores might be good as well. That would be a good one to communicate changes to pet owners, so. Sarah, I want to know more about monkey sanctuaries. That sounds very interesting. And not sure we need a whole study session on it, but I was not aware of the monkey sanctuary contingent out there.
We've all heard something.
Fascinating that we have code for it as well.
I just wanted to add for everyone, I don't want it to be lost that there are severe crimes that happen out in the unincorporated areas of the county. I know that we're trying to have a really positive outlook and compliance-based approach to this, but we are not blind to the, the fact that there are vicious animals. There are animals that have attacked and killed other animals. There are animals, there are dogs in the county who have been running at large. That's just how they're kept. And I, I don't want it to confuse the issue that we're trying to have a leash law in the county or anything like that, because there's very specific language addressing having control over your dog. But, you know, again, as a resident in the unincorporated area of the county, I can't even walk to my mailbox with my children and my dogs, because there are people in my area who let their dogs roam. It would be really nice to address that. And I know that former Commissioner DeRusso has had constituents with the same complaint. And so we want to have everyone enjoy the freedom of living out here in the county, but also, you know, we don't want people to feel trapped in their homes because other people are enjoying their freedom. And, and further with the animal cruelty issue, while Lawrence Mean Society does want to take a compliance-based approach and, and helping people get the resources they need, there are cases where people have been so overtly and knowingly neglectful of their animals. Those animals do in fact need to be seized, and they do need to be prosecuted under the state statute for animal neglect and cruelty. So when there are vicious animals and when there are, when there is animal cruelty and animal abuse out here in the county, we would connect with the sheriff's deputies to get the appropriate enforcement. And for vicious animals, you would notice in the code that those do go over to district court. There's no administrative hearing for those animals who have caused severe injury or death to a person. Those go straight over to district court. So I just don't want that, that fact to be lost in what we're talking about today.
I really appreciate that, Katie, and I think that is, you know, we, we have known for a period of time that the code was out of date and, and that there have been some really significant serious issues in the unincorporated area. And I, I really do want to echo the, the thanks of the commission in your, your work and Shannon's work on helping us get us this far, which is, has been a ton of, had a ton of work and a long time coming. So thank you for that. And I, it's really great to be able to publicly sort of talk about this, and I think we, we're very close to making some, some great improvements. So I guess from that, what I'll take, just if we're getting ready to wrap up, you know, I think as staff, we will kind of, we will work with Shannon and Katie to get, to talk about how we, how do we let the public know that we're talking about this issue? Come up with sort of a timeline related to the budget process to bring some pieces in there. Also, from a staff perspective, we will follow up on the Administrative Hearing Officer and how that, you know, what's the financial and what's the plan for implementing that in conjunction with this. I don't know that we have to have all those details worked out. I think it's just something we can begin to get some thoughts around. And then as we go through the approval process, we can work more fully on. And I can certainly update the commission as to what our progress is on those pieces as we move closer to, to budget and, and the code. And that way, if you all hear, if it's commissioners, you hear comments from the, the public about this code, like how do we, where, where can you direct them so that we can get this all funneled in? So we'll definitely be back with the commission, so you, so you're aware of that piece.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you so much, Katie and Shannon, for this presentation. I'm excited to see this all move forward.
We are really glad to have had this opportunity to talk to you guys, so thank you.
And I think with that, we will recess until 5:30 for our business meeting.
Thank you.